Good evening and welcome to the January 9th, 2018 meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen. Happy New Year, everyone. May we have a roll call, please?
President is Selectman Tropiano, Selectman Scasiati, Selectman Whiteside, Selectman Slavens, Selectman Titlebaum, Town Administrator Derek Sullivan, Town Council Richard Bowen.
Let's see. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Leggett, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, announcements. Selectman Tropiano.
I'm a wait. None.
Selectman Whiteside.
All set, thank you.
Selectman Whiteside.
Last.
Okay, then. Clerk Slavin, what do you have in the folder there?
Okay, first off, which seems to be an ongoing occurrence these days, we have another member of town government spent a lot of time here. Donald Rogers passed away during the holidays. Donald passed away at the age of 83, lifelong resident of Wareham. Donald served on the Conservation Committee for a long time, and he will be missed. And I'd ask for a moment of silence. Also, Paul Pearl passed away at the same timeframe. Paul was involved very much with the Toby Homestead, and he also passed away at the same time, so we ask for a moment of silence there as well. We have the Martin Luther King Breakfast. It's an annual event. It's on the 15th, which is this coming Monday. It starts about 8:00 in the morning at the Boys and Girls Club over at the Hammond School in Onset.
There is a number where you can get tickets for that, 508-322-8722. Again, that's 508-322-8722. Typically, what you do is call up and order your tickets and then pay for them at the door.
Yep. You can also go to the Boys and Girls Club during the week and pick them up. I also have an announcement from Wareham Historical Society. They have an event on January 15th, also Monday, but at 7:00 PM at the old Methodist Meeting House, 495 Main Street. This is going to have to do with oyster farming. And basically, I believe, it's Mr. Sutter, whose great-grandfather started the oyster harvesting in the early 1900s. We'll talk about the industry, how it's evolved, equipment used then and now, and it'll also be a video presentation. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
I do know that the Knights of Hospitality are now operating for those people who need shelter. There's a rotating schedule. I believe there may be a link on the town website, and if there isn't, maybe we can get one up.
Yes, there is.
I thought there was, but I hadn't checked it recently, so...
Contact any of the major churches, they'll also have a list, because that's how they all work through.
Yep. Okay. Selectman Whiteside? You said you were going last.
Well, I mean, last, last.
Oh, last, last, okay, all right. Let's see. Citizen comments, is there anybody you'd like to speak to the board tonight?
What?
I guess what happens in Nevada stays in Nevada, and what happens in Wareham when you're in Nevada stays in Wareham, so that's all good.
Family.
Actually, I would like to make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I just want to say that despite the fact that we did not get a foot and a half of snow, we did get some of the most miserable driving conditions that we've had in a long time. And I want to congratulate and thank the Municipal Maintenance Department and their contract plows for keeping the roads as safe as they were. Anybody who drove out of town, even as far as Fall River knows, there was something like 14 inches of snow. If you went outside the borders of the town of Wareham, you slid all over the road, basically. So it was great that people stayed home, hoping or thinking there was a huge blizzard. Many communities, including Mr. Bowen's hometown, were really badly beaten up. We were not, and that's great, but it's very icy out there still. Ladies and gentlemen, take it easy.
Thank you. Let's see, just getting organized here. Appointments, reappointments, interviews. I don't see her here tonight, Jean Conotan. Kind of gone back and forth on whether the selectmen actually appoint these people or not. Under state law, the people who are designated by their respective boards from whence they spring to serve on community preservation are actually appointed by the vote of those boards. So we don't actually, even though we've actually been voting these people on, we don't actually have any formal thing to do in this process to put these people on the boards. For example, community preservation, where there's people from Housing Authority, Conservation Commission, planning, what have you. But I would ask the board to endorse the Housing Authority's appointment of Mrs. Conotan.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion to endorse by Selectman Whiteside, seconded by Clerk Slavin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. It's nice to at least bring it forward at the meeting and do that step, I think.
I think we just still sign the form, so it goes to the clerk.
Yep.
It gets signed in.
Next up, we have licenses and permits. We've got a 7:15 hearing we've got to hold off on. If you're ready, why don't we go to the application for the Wareham House of Pizza?
Okay. This is for a change of ownership, so therefore there's a new common Vic license. It's for F&amp;J Restaurant LLC doing business as Wareham House of Pizza, and it's located at 131 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. That's the motion.
Okay. We have a motion for the license by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. It's unanimous. Next up, Oyster Festival, they're not here yet. Oh, okay. Come on up.
Sorry.
Gee.
It's Matt.
Yeah.
How you doing?
I take it our town administrator is a frequent customer?
I've been there multiple times, yeah.
Well, introduce yourself and tell us what you're going to be doing with the place.
My name's Neil Rodriguez. Been in the business for 20 years, moving around. Plan on keeping it exactly the same. Do a little bit of updating, but he's been there for 45 years, and he's done a really good job of what he does, so don't plan on changing anything. He's got a lot of other customers. I've met him over the last, you know, week and a half, and it's funny how many times you see the same face when we're older again, so...
That was Derek, right?
Yeah.
It's funny, I mean, a lot of people you think, you know, they've been going there their entire childhood, up into adults, and so, you know, they're still there, so they're there for another week, so if you're a customer, we'll visit them before they go.
Okay, well, thank you for your interest and investment in the town, and we look forward to another 45 years.
Peter's quite the character, so you have a lot to live up to.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I realized that over the last couple of weeks.
Good luck. Let us know if we can help you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Fan Club request, change of hours, temporary.
This is a motion for common Vic and alcohol beverage license. Basically, a change in operation for Saturday, January 27th, 2018, and Sunday, January 28th, 2018, open at 10:00 AM.
Second.
That's the only change.
Okay. Motion to approve the temporary change of hours by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. And let's see, we don't have...
Mike Bessie's here from the Oyster Festival.
Oh, okay. Is he the only representative from the Oyster Festival, or do we have others coming?
No, I'm not here. I'm just here to support them.
Okay. All right, we'll wait for the, I guess, the officers to come in. We have to hold off on the 7:15 hearing, so let's jump down to town business. We'll just circle those two.
How about doing the certificates?
Could I ask why you have to hold off on here?
Excuse me?
That's why I'm here. Why are you holding off on here for Truck Caps Unlimited?
Oh, you're here for that?
Yes.
It's not 7:15 yet.
Oh, okay.
It's a hearing, so it has to start. It can't start earlier than the time.
They have this little thing called a law.
Yeah. We do what we can to not screw it up too much.
Believe me, we'd like to start it early.
Yeah, go ahead with the certificate of appreciation if you want.
Is he here?
We can do that, or you can go back, Linda and Norah just came in from the Oyster Festival.
Oh, okay. Oyster Festival people.
Come on down.
Come on down.
Yes.
Hey.
Don't mess around.
That's how we work.
It's a quick operation up here.
Hello, everybody? We'll wait.
Hi.
Good evening. If you could answer the Admiral Stockwell questions, both who you are and why you're here.
Did we miss something, Admiral?
No, not yet.
Not yet.
We're just in the world tonight, so...
Okay. I'm Linda Burke, representing the Wareham Oyster Festival, Inc.
And I'm Nora Vicki, a member of the group.
So, once again, you want to put on an Oyster Festival, and you've decided you like the Sunday of Memorial Day better than the earlier, more frigid dates?
Well, in addition to having better weather, we were able to take advantage of the Cape Flyer a little bit, and with some advance notice, I think we'll be able to take advantage of that even more. That's why we're here probably unexpectedly early, and this additional time will give us the opportunity to promote the festival more widely than we have in the past.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we take advantage of a lot of free advertising calendars, press releases, and that sort of thing. That's what we do, so we're pretty good at it. Just to bring you up to speed, though, we're now under the direction of an independent 501(c)(3) corporation formed for the express purpose of running the Oyster Festival. And as I said, we're seeking approval early so that we can enhance our marketing efforts and reach a broader audience, and we understand that this would have to be a conditional approval, and there's some details that would have to be worked out. We always seek to have meetings with the public safety folks, and we'll solicit their input on a variety of things, including this year, the actual route for the 5K race. We have used the same route for the past four years and thought maybe we could redirect the runners a little bit away from Main Street so that they're not running right through where we're setting up the festival, but we think we have a solution to that. But we would like to get input from the police department on what they think here. So the differences this year are that we're seeking a rain date, which we have not done in the past. We've been blessed with pretty good weather, and we're hoping to keep it that way. As we have talked about, we'd like to expand the actual food court area so that people will be able to have beverages outside of that Pezzoli Square area. And we talked to the police chief about that at the end of the festival last year, and yourself, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
We always work with the Board of Health on a list of vendors. We provide them with the list about a week before the event occurs and make sure that all the paperwork that they need to have has been taken care of with the food vendors. And that, I guess, is it for changes. We're not doing the fundraising gala this year, but that was not part of the approvals in the past anyway.
Right. Yeah, that was always held at a private location, so it didn't require any approval.
This year, we also are seeking more vendors. We have, actually, we have vendors contacting us just because the word is out and just because it's been larger. It's kind of amazing to me that this is the fifth Oyster Festival. Where did five years ago, actually? But it's been fun, and we've really enjoyed it. And as you know, it's gotten larger each year. We have more people attend, and it's really a good way to bring people down to the village. So we also will be getting more vendors. We'll be expanding that area on Main Street. And as always, we have that educational component, and we think that's really important, so it's not just a fun festival. We do have the education component. And this year, we're working with Mass Maritime, and they have an agriculture program there. So we're working with having some of those students come, and maybe even working with getting them into the high school to talk to the students there. We did get a grant from the Wareham Cultural Council, which we'll be using to fund some of our performances, our bands, and so forth. Is that about it?
We'll apply again for the State Cultural Council grant, but it's important to note that otherwise, that whole event is paid for by private contributions, and we don't look for money from the town. In fact, every year, we contribute about $500, and hopefully it'll be more than that in the $25 fee that is charged for vendors who participate.
Just with regard to the additional vendors, are you looking to go further up Main Street from where you are now? Because I think before you stopped, probably in front of Minerva's or thereabouts, or maybe the bank, maybe the Santander, so I'm just wondering where they're going to go, if you have additional...
Agonizing of where the fire department wants us to be.
Yeah.
We don't want to disrupt their activities if they need to get out of there. And if you've seen how the layout works, it's actually pretty spread out, and we have an opportunity to add a bunch of additional vendors right in the space.
Okay, so you're just going to fill in then, for the most part? Okay. I just didn't know if you needed additional room or not. Selectman Tropiano?
Yeah, I totally agree with the Oyster Festival. I think it's been great. I love to go. It's kind of a fun event. It's going to be hard for us to sort of give them an approval. We could give them a preliminary approval, saying, "Yeah, okay, we agree with the concept and the idea," but like every other one, it's got to have all the components from everybody before we can actually put our final stamp on it, you know? You what?
To the paperwork.
Right.
I have it all ready.
You have it all?
The departments have all submitted everything. There's a request, there is one request...
They already dealt with the police chief, and everybody's all done?
Yes.
There's going to be a public safety, they're going to have another meeting ahead of time.
I got the impression from what she said that she hadn't gotten any of this.
Oh, no, we submitted the application in early December.
Oh, okay, good. All right, if everything's there, that's great, okay.
Everything is set, Patrick. There's a couple of conditions that go with it.
Oh, that's fine, okay. I had thought that you were missing some stuff, and like, I wanted you to know that we're all in support, at least I'm in support, and, you know, that if you needed a few things, then fine, we'll catch up, you know?
No, the only, you know, one thing you do want to do, of course, is make sure the street is cleared by 5:00, because that's apparently when the traffic is going to recommence.
Yep.
And just make sure you've got your vendors, you know, off of the street. And even, you know, if they're on the sidewalk, you know, putting their stuff in the back of their vehicles, that's okay, but they've got to be out of the street by then. And the other thing was, I guess, last year, I wasn't around for this exciting bit, but apparently the electrical supply in Pezzoli Square got overloaded by two fryolators being plugged in. It can handle one, but not two. So Municipal Maintenance just, you know, wanted us to, you know, in the event that they've got to pay somebody to come and open up the box, even if you guys sit there and, you know, flip the breaker back on and off the rest of the day, we still have to pay that person half a day's double time on a holiday weekend, so they just wanted us to make it so that should that happen, which I don't think it's going to, but if it does, that you'd be responsible for that cost, and that's it.
Great.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve use of town property for the Wareham Oyster Festival by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Scasiati. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Now, do we need to come back for approval of the liquor permit? The one-day liquor permit?
Yeah, where that's not part of this.
Because we did submit that application and the fee and everything at the same time.
Is it in there?
Let me check and see.
It's part of the package. If it's in there, that's all approval.
Yeah.
They have a good system there, the way they coordinate off and everything. You've got a good system.
On that approval, do you want to include the, as the motion, the electrical services required by the...
Well, they know. It was made implicit.
Probably should be included in the motion.
Yeah, it's all right. I'm not worried about it. But I know you had submitted it, but we do have it noticed on the agenda just for the use of town roads, which is a little bit different than a one-day...
So we'll put it on next week, and we'll do it.
We put it on whenever you want it, actually, because if you want to come back, you know, a month out for, you know...
A little appetizing.
...more publicity closer to the event.
I'll have it.
It's up to you. I did review, it wasn't part of this particular bit of information. Trying to get things done over the holidays is challenging for us.
Sure it is. Well, as long as we have the authorization to start promoting the event, that's...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Now, just with regard to the liquor, are you looking to allow people to walk around with alcohol? Because I know we had discussed that in the past, and last year you didn't want to go for it, but...
Well, it's something that we would need to talk to the police department about and make sure that they were on board and...
Yep.
Got the details there.
I know it's going on a year and a half now. We did a workshop that just turned into an information session because we couldn't open the workshop because we didn't have a quorum of selectmen, but we did hear from Chief Walsh, and this was when the WVA was the sponsor of the event. It predates your corporate entity being formed. But at that time, I think there was just a minimal addition of a detail officer. You know, we don't want to crack the rowdy crowd to this. We don't get a real, especially young crowd. There's people with kids who come, but, you know, it's not like spring break down at Daytona Beach. So with that in mind, you know, I know that it didn't seem like it should be that big of a deal to allow people to actually buy a beer and walk around to the vendors, but that's something we'll discuss when we get to it.
It would be on the recommendation, though, please.
Yeah, it would be. We always follow the chief's recommendations when it comes to festivals and when it comes to alcohol and, you know, whether he wants containment or not, so...
Do we vote?
Hmm?
You have a motion, do we vote?
One.
Who? We voted.
It's not on the agenda. We can't vote it.
We can't vote.
We can't vote the liquor yet.
No, but we voted the other piece, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did it.
Yeah, we're done.
It's 5-0-0.
Attention.
Wow. Getting late today. Well, thank you for coming in, thank you for your time, and good luck with the...
Thank you all.
...festival.
Thanks.
Let us know when you're ready to do the liquor application.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can start the hearing for the application for Class 1 license for Truck Caps Unlimited. Let's see, you need a roll call vote to, you know, a motion and then a roll call vote. Can we motion open the hearing, please?
Motion to open the hearing.
Second.
Motion to open the hearing by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. Roll call vote, Selectman Tropiano.
Yes.
Selectman Scasiati.
Yes.
Selectman Whiteside.
Yes.
Clerk Slavin.
Yes.
Titlebaum, yes, the hearing is now open. Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
So you're looking for a Class 1 license?
So I'm Joyce Bakayaki.
Yeah.
You're on behalf of Truck Caps Unlimited. We've applied for a Class 1 license. We have held a Class 1 license in a different corporate name.
Yep.
So we're here just to kind of switch that over to Truck Caps Unlimited.
Just because they sell trailers.
Correct, yeah. No vehicles, just trailers.
It's the only way it can work.
Yep.
So this is really a no-brainer.
No, I know you had hoped to avoid the time and expense of a public hearing, but unfortunately, with a change of corporate entity, it's a change of ownership, so we had to open it up to the public to come in and throw rocks at you if they wanted to, so...
Okay.
Which I don't think there's anybody out there that's going to, so I think you're pretty safe.
Okay.
Any questions on the board?
Nope.
Okay, is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of the applicant, other than the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody who is opposed to the applicant? Seeing none.
Move to close the public here.
Second.
Okay, motion to close the hearing by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Scasiati. Roll call vote, Selectman Tropiano.
Yes.
Selectman Scasiati.
Yes.
Selectman Whiteside.
Yes.
Clerk Slavin, yes. Titlebaum, yes, the hearing is now closed. Can we have a motion on the application, please?
Motion to award a Class 1 license issued on January 9th, 2018, to Truck Caps Unlimited, doing business as 878...
Caps Unlimited, Inc.
Inc., sorry, to correct.
I'm getting it.
87, ah, it's early. I'm still on West Coast time. 878 County Road, West Wareham, Mass.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the application by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. It is unanimous, and this will be available for you to pick up in the office tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good luck doing the same thing.
Thank you.
[laughing]
Do you want to do it now?
Yeah. He's not coming.
Okay. Okay, now we have present certificate of appreciation. Selectman Whiteside.
Mr. Murphy is unfortunately not feeling well this evening, but we do have a certificate of appreciation for him, and we also have some honored guests, a previous police chief, who one time actually babysat for my children. They were four and three, so they weren't doing anything that they shouldn't have been doing at that point, yet.
You're sure about that?
No. But I'd like them to stand, you know, sort of here, because Peter worked with all of them, and we invited you gentlemen here this evening to hear this presentation, and possibly, Tommy, you could take it to him. Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you, Tom.
So this evening, we have Mr. Joyce, previous police chief, Mr. Evans, EMT, and Chief Walsh.
Former Fire Chief of Marion, too.
Oh, yeah.
EFS Director.
True. All right. Wareham Board of Selectmen...
Anywhere's the ball, time.
Wow.
Spirits? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay. Board of Selectmen, Wareham, Massachusetts, awards this certificate of congratulations to Peter M. Murphy. For 27 years, the voice was Peter M. Murphy, the communications supervisor and E-911 supervisor for the Wareham Police Department. Peter started his career telling people where to go under then-chief of police, Thomas Joyce. During Joyce's tenure, the dispatching unit went from part-time to full-time, starting[1598.12] with three full-time dispatchers each manning an eight-hour shift. The town now has eight full-time communications officers. Peter Murphy was trained by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the policies and procedures for the E-911 system when it was initiated. Not only did he keep records for the Wareham Police Department and the E-911 system, he also maintained the records for the district court, the CJLS, and the FBI. Quite an impressive list of entities which relied on Peter's accuracy. It is common knowledge, or it should be, that the most accurate listing of public and private streets in the town of Wareham was actually maintained by Peter Murphy. Not only does he know all of the street names, he also can tell you where they are. He's one of the few people who know the reason behind road names, having tremendous similarities, and previously duplications, i.e. First Avenue and First Street. Very confusing, but not to Peter. Peter Murphy worked for three different chiefs of police, as well as with a cadre of captains, lieutenants, sergeants, detectives, patrolmen, and summer help. He was an integral part of the team which kept the workings of this busiest of departments on track, record-keeping-wise. Peter Murphy survived working for several town administrators, as well as a myriad of workers in town administration as the town of Wareham grew in size and complexity of keeping accurate records. He served under several different configurations of selectmen, and he still has a sense of humor. Being a part of the Wareham Police Association, Peter has been involved in many community events, including raising scholarship funds, senior citizen cookouts, Christmas fireworks, toy collections, constructions of basketball courts, and the police memorial monument. He is a firm believer in the department being an integral part of the community and a positive role model for civic engagement. Peter recently retired and wrote an open thank you letter to the town. In that letter, he mentions many members of his immediate family and scores of friends. Despite ongoing health issues, Peter has spent most of his adult life giving back to those who helped love and support him. It is now time that Peter be recognized as an integral member of our community. Congratulations, Peter. Thank you, and best wishes for a long and enjoyable retirement.
Thank you all.
Just a quick mugshot?
Need a mugshot.
Of all of you, together?
I see Kevin smiling here.
Tommy, open the thing up, the flip it up, please. Oh, boy. Thank you.
David can hold it.
Those big signs I had? All the signs, Wareham needs all. Peter made them.
Okay, we can roll right back on the agenda. Vote to award design contract for Phase 5 Streetscape improvements. We actually approved this expenditure as part of the CDBG block grant for 2016. So there's $50,000 was made available, and $48,000 is what the bid is.
And what are they doing?
Continuing from where they stopped at Chapel Street, going up Main Street, no more bump outs.
That's all I want to hear.
I knew that.
I hear bump out anywhere.
You and I haven't even discussed that, but I knew that's all you wanted to hear.
If I hear the word bump out, you couldn't get my vote if your life depended on it.
This is the year that I hope to bump off some of the bump outs.
Someday, when I lose my mind, I'm going to take a machine, and I'm going to go down there and rip every one of those bump outs out just by driving down the road.
Well, you couldn't plead insanity because it would be about the most insane thing we could do.
Because I could plead insanity at that point, when I get old enough.
Next to you.
It's not insane if everybody thinks it's a great idea. So there's your defense. Gone with the wind.
Would you like me to read the scope of Phase 5?
Not the whole thing.
No.
We've all received it.
No.
If you want to read the bullet points, go ahead, but not the.
Selective demolition, earthwork, slope protection, erosion control, bituminous concrete, paving and traffic markings, concrete paving, granite curbing, ADA compliant ramps and pavers, and detectable warning strips, site utilities and installation of pedestrian scales, street lighting, decorative pavers, site improvements, and street furniture fixtures.
Right. The presumption is that there will be a figure in the next CDBG application to actually pay for the work, once these design specifications are set forth and you kind of know what the work is going to consist of. So that will complete this decade-long project.
I'm okay. Okay. Do we need a motion for you to sign this?
Uh, yeah, we need to vote.
Make a motion for the chairman to sign this particular contract?
Okay, motion by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. I'll sign it right now, so I don't forget. Back to you. Next up, we have vote to accept donations for the Lukey Park Playground.
Okay.
And.
We've got three or four different, I'll just go one at a time here.
Yeah, yeah. We acknowledge everybody.
First one is a donation from Sean and Amy Cutting.
No, that's cemetery.
Yeah, no, I just, I'm just going along.
Oh, I'm, okay.
I'm not going by the listing there. And this one here was actually $400 total. $300 went for the cremated remains of Mr. Dale Ferring for the burial, and $100 is the actual donation for cemetery purposes.
Move to accept.
Okay, motion to accept by Selectman Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Scaziotti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Thank you very much to Mr. and Mrs. Cutting for their generous donation to municipal maintenance to be used for cemetery purposes.
Next one is for the Lukey Playground. This is from Joseph Sorrow, Gateway Tavern, and this is for, looks like $1,000 for picnic table, and $600 for, $1,000 for picnic table.
Move to accept.
Second.
Okay, motion to accept the donation from Selectman Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Scaziotti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, unanimous, 5-0-0. And thank you to Mr. Sorrow and the Gateway Tavern for this generous donation.
She's always steps up. And the next one is from WL Brian Inc., 210 Wood Street, Middleborough, and they actually donated crushed bank gravel for $1,354.38, and crushed bank gravel also, someone up here, $433.13, for a total of $1,787.51.
I correct the name as Byrne, not Brian?
Byrne.
Byrne.
B-Y-R-N-E.
Byrne.
Byrne standing correct.
Byrne.
Byrne, you said Brian.
Well, B-Y-R-N-E.
B-Y-R-N.
Byrne.
Byrne saying gravel.
Be either way.
No, Byrne's Irish.
You said Brian.
Yeah.
Stop.
Brian like fish.
Yeah.
Living Brian.
Depends how you pronounce it.
Folks are fish, living Brian.
Move to accept. Second.
We got a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by somebody, seconded by somebody. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Brian on the brain. But thank you to WL Byrne Incorporated for their generous donation of materials for use at the Lukey Playground.
Okay, next one is from the Brotherhood of Elks, Wareham to Bedford Lodge, has done a donation to Lukey Playground for $1,000 for my fellow elk members.
Move to accept.
Motion to accept by Selectman Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Troppiano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
I abstained on that one.
4-0-1, Selectman Slavin abstaining because he is an elk. And thank you very much to the Fraternal Order of Elks for the Wareham to Bedford Lodge for their generous donation. That takes care of the gifts. Thank you again, everybody. Continued discussion of potential Springtown meeting articles. This is on here because next week, I hope you all checked your emails today, we received materials from the school building committee, including some of their narrowing down of site locations and discussions about new elementary school or schools. So that information is all out there. I've invited them, representatives from that committee, to come in before us next week to discuss this because they have a deadline of January 22nd to vote and begin their process of preparing a town meeting warrant article, getting their state submittals ready, and everything else. So it's important that we all take the time to look at this and try to figure out the different alternatives on what we might want to support here in terms of going forward with a new elementary school. I think it's pretty clear at this point that it would take a dead exclusion passed by the voters to get there.
No, no question about that.
You know, you can't, we can't build schools off of, you know, what we take in.
Certainly not.
Permit fees and everything else, and, you know, free cash and all that. That's not how that works.
Although, we built a library and a school once in a budget.
Hmm?
We built a high school and a library within the budget once upon a time. It crippled us for years.
Yeah. Yeah, it's tough. Big-ticket items require extraordinary measures, so, but it's equally clear to me at least anyway that both of those schools have way outlived their service life, and kids getting an education in this town deserve at least a decent building to go to. Any comments from the board on the general topic here, or?
Not on that, but I would ask that you reach out to the cemetery commissioners because they have, they plan on, as their liaison, they plan on bringing back the rules and regulations which were discussed in October.
Yep.
Please.
Yep, I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. Continued discussion of potential town meetings spring, well, I guess Selectman Whiteside introduced that. So that's one topic that might be coming back. You know, pretty soon, under 48 hours, I'm going to read the dates for getting a town meeting going. But while we're here, we have the opportunity to discuss anybody's pet ideas for selectmen-sponsored Springtown meeting articles.
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
I have one.
Yeah, shoot.
I think we should get rid of the community events committee. I think that, and I've had this discussion with several of you over the three years. I know it was just reinvented, but it is very difficult to get funds in a timely fashion from that group. It is, in fact, taxpayers' money going to support private things, and I don't think that's appropriate. So I would ask that.
Sorry about that.
Back. That, an item to discuss, you know, Mr. Title Bomb, you've said, well, you know, we just passed it, and the Senate and the House are going to think we're crazy. Good, they can think we're crazy. We shouldn't have done it in the first place, and I'd like to undo it.
Okay, then.
Thank you.
Well, come back with that. Selectman Slavin?
Yes.
Any thoughts? You know, one thing is, we've discussed and just haven't gotten to is this whole idea of, you know, do we, in this day and age where information is so readily available and you don't have to ride your horse over to the tavern to read the town meeting warrant, you can just go online and see it, is it really necessary to post a town meeting warrant 45 days out? That's an internal requirement to the town of Wareham. State law doesn't require anything like that. So that's something that perhaps we want to discuss, shortening up that timeframe, because having to decide by the first week in February what we're going to be talking about at the end of April seems like a long time out.
It's a charter change.
It is a charter change, which means you have to pass it here, and then you've got to go to the legislature, and blah, 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 and special act and all that stuff. So it's not something that would happen overnight, but I would hope that if we were to do something this spring, that it would be in place for next year.
Well, it's certainly something we could talk about, for sure.
Yeah, okay, so that's sort of one of my things that I was thinking of. Let's see, going forward, does anybody have any town business within 48 hours? Selectman Troppiano?
No.
Selectman Scaziotti? Selectman Whiteside?
Last.
Well, I do have something, and there'll be copies available for the media as well, so that you'll know what the town meeting deadlines and dates are. I'm going to read off the process for calling the 2018 Spring Annual Town Meeting. And again, this is for the annual, we'll do this same rig and roll in early February, I think, for the special, so we don't need as much lead time there. April 3rd, 2018 is the town election, and that's always Article 1 on the town meeting warrant. It actually is, town meeting actually opens that day. April 23rd, 2018, that's general business, that's Articles 2 through the end of the warrant for everything else. Tuesday, January 9th, 2018, Board of Selectmen should establish all dates for completion of a warrant for the annual town meeting. That's what we're doing now. Friday, February 2nd, 2018, last day to post in at least one public place in each precinct, notice of intention of Board of Selectmen to call the annual town meeting for April 3rd, 2018. That's done pursuant to Wareham Bylaw Division 1, Article 1, Section 3, which requires 10 days' notice of the intention for a town meeting before the warrant closes. Monday, April 5th, 2018, will be the last day to submit all articles except for citizens' petition articles to be inserted in the warrant. Thursday, February 8th, 2018, last day to submit citizens' petition articles and all other articles to be inserted in the warrant, and that's pursuant to the Wareham Home Rule Charter, Section 2-4(c), which is 45 days before a town meeting convenes. Tuesday, February 13th, 2018, Board of Selectmen should officially close the warrant. Friday, February 16th, 2018, last day to post in each precinct and deliver a copy of the warrant to the town moderator, to the chairman of each committee established by Section 2-5 of the Wareham Home Rule Charter, and that's pursuant to Wareham Home Rule Charter, Section 2-4d, which is within three days of the closing of the warrant. Tuesday, February 20th, 2018, last day to submit to the Finance Committee articles included in the warrant. That's pursuant to Wareham Bylaw Division 1, Article 1, Section 1, which is no later than 35 days before a town meeting convenes. Thursday, March 8th, 2018, last day to publish entire warrant in a local newspaper. That's pursuant to Wareham Home Rule Charter, Section 2-4d, which is at least 14 days before a town meeting. Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, commencement of the actual town meeting on Election Day, Bylaw Division 1, Article 1, Section 1, which is the first Tuesday of April. And on Monday, April 23rd, 2018, general business portion of annual town meeting pursuant to Bylaw Division 1, Article 1, Section 1, which is the fourth Monday of April. So again, these will be available to you folks to take with you, so you don't have to pick my brains afterwards. And that's that, Town Administrators' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to reiterate, talking about municipal maintenance, the staff came in about 7:30 that morning and did not leave till 5:00 a.m. the following morning. Most other communities in our area did send their people home around 10:00 p.m., but our stayed on, and the big difference, what was really tough in Wareham was when it turned over from the rain and the, into the snow, there was that freezing point. That's what really made it dangerous, so I appreciate them being out there and working The other item is, I got a, I got a bit of a late Christmas gift from Mr. Pigeon of the Finance Committee. They've requested to have the budget meeting on the 18th. It's a little ahead of the 25th deadline, so.
18th of January?
Yes.
Eager beavers, are they?
Yeah, so it's, that's, I don't think I get actually all the, I don't even think I will have the water pollution control budget by then, but it's okay, we'll make it work.
Yep.
So.
Well, it's an austere year, so the more you talk about it, the less it'll hurt in April.
Yeah. But that's, I appreciate them letting me know, and we'll move forward on that. It's just that I may not have the opportunity to advise this board in a public session beforehand, before the Finance Committee meeting.
I doubt you have the time.
Yeah.
No, that's all right. Okay, anything else? You good? Okay, Liaison Initiative Reports, Selectman Troppiano.
All right, I just want to update you on the meeting that we had. Alan was away, but we had the meeting anyway, just to get a sort of a, a thing going, and actually worked out pretty good. We met with Onset, it was myself, Jim Joe Birdy, what's his name, the superintendent? Their superintendent, their board, it was quite a little good group. We worked very good together, we got some good frank questions that were asked. We managed to hook up the two superintendents to start to deal with, they're going to give us three years of their records, which will help them to start to set numbers and, you know, get what the base is going to be and so on, but they'll be able to work those things out. And then they're going to start to talk about the issues that could develop. For instance, one of the things that might happen is somebody might complain that their meeting is not meeting properly. You know, they call the sewer department and they say, "Look, that can't be right. I couldn't have used that kind of water," whatever. So then they would have to go and verify the meter. Well, there's a cost, that's a cost to us, not a cost to them, because it's, came through the sewer department, you see what I'm saying? So those things are going to have to be figured into the package, and how they're going to work it. And so there'll be a lot of conversations relevant to that, to get it all, so that it'll be a smooth operation and not something that none of us can live with. And then, of course, our council will have to put the IMA together ultimately for everybody to sign, so that it's legal and just. Our town administrator will have to approve that he's okay with the expenditures, which I'm sure he wouldn't be, because that's just his MO. But at any rate, it is, it was a very good, productive meeting. We're going to have some others, and I hope Alan will be there because, you know, his input is always very valuable. So we did that. Then I, I was, I went to the drop-in center that they had at the church. It's, that group is doing a heck of a job over there, and the drop-in center, I don't know if anybody's been to one of the drop-in centers, but you should go. They do it once a month, and I'm not sure what this month is, but I'll get the date for you. It's when it comes up, and I'll make sure everybody knows. But if you go there, they'll have booths from various odds, Seven Hills, you know, all the different places that handle one form of addiction or another. They also have, not just, not just drugs, by the way, they do alcohol, counseling, every, everything you can name. And they have these, these very good, intelligent people that can help people and get them into a facility. So if they, if they're having an issue, they can come there. Not only if you, if you know somebody's having an issue, you can go there and get counseling, you know what I mean? And they can set you up with some, some form of help for you to try to deal with the individual that's in your home. It might be your son or your daughter, or, who knows? It could be anybody, your husband, whatever. Whatever the issue is, and any kind of addiction. So this thing is really, really overnight sprung up. It's doing terrific things already. I mean, they had two nights so far, two of the drop-in centers, and they've actually put people into programs, which, you know, is the first time in all the years that I've been chasing this stuff around that somebody's actually gotten to a program. So I'm quite excited about it.
So it's been, and I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, it's been about two years, I'd say at least, that you've been going to the meetings up in Plymouth and chasing around the others. So, did this come from all the meetings?
You know, there was, the church, there's a gentleman who moved here who had some addiction issues and so on, and he got straight and so on, and he just, he just, you know, started talking about it. And the church said, "Okay," you know, and they grabbed ahold of it. And then they managed to get some of the groups together to start talking about it. And so we meet, and I've been going to the meetings when they're, when they have, they have about once a month, sometimes twice, depending on when they, whatever they have to talk about. And it's a terrific group that's actually working on the ground, you know what I mean? Like, so far, there's been a lot of stuff that, we go to these meetings and everybody talks about, you know, we have a speaker here and a speaker there, and I have someone speaking this, somebody telling us this and everything, but no one actually working with boots on the ground, getting people from here to here, to the help. You know, and this is actually doing that. This is getting people on the ground, walking in the door, you know, "I've got a problem," or "My daughter has a problem, how can we help her?" Or whatever the issue is. And let me tell you, no, without help, they can't do it. And I don't want to hear anybody throw that baloney out there, "Well, they're not tough enough. They've got to be able to do it." That's baloney. This is a physical addiction that binds to receptors in the brain, and whether it's alcohol or drugs, you cannot do it yourself. There's one in a million that can. One in a million. And how you got to it to begin with is irrelevant. You're there. That's all that matters.
This is separate from the Plymouth County programs?
Completely separate.
The Plymouth County programs are...
And the Church of the Good Shepherd is hosting it, and like we said, I'll get you the, every month they have the drop-in center, and then they have meetings here and there about, you know, kind of putting it all together. And I'll have a lot better information as time goes on, and, you know, when they are, what times, the hours. Typically, they go five to nine on the drop-in day. And they also do some sexual counseling as well. They give out condoms and stuff. Matter of fact, I meant to bring it tonight and I forgot, but they signed me up for Narcan, so I have Narcan now. So, you know, if I keep it, I keep it in my truck, and I have it if I need it, it's there. And if somebody, I run into somebody, you can't really hurt them if it's, you know, if it's something that, let's say it's not heroin or an opioid, and you give it to them anyway, you're not gonna hurt them. But if they do, are, they need it, they need it. You know what I'm saying? So, you sign up, they give it to you, the whole thing, and it's really kind of neat. And they have it available there, so you can come in and get it and sign up. They tell you how to use it, explain the whole thing to you, which is really neat. It's not a bad idea if you have children and you haven't been able to speak to them about, you know, sexual issues. You can bring them, and they have condoms available for them and things to help them, and they have these neat little program kits that they gave out to them, the parents can give to them, and it talks about all the issues and, you know, things that can happen as far as those kinds of things are concerned. A lot of things that people kind of ignore. I mean, a lot of good stuff, on the ground, boots-on-the-ground stuff, great stuff.
Well, thanks for bringing that to people's attention.
Pretty excited about it, anyway.
I see that. Very good. Selectman Scaziotti? Yeah, you. You haven't said anything for a month, so this should be lengthy.
Well, I've been away for a month, so therefore I don't have that much. Planning board met last night. There's a, I think the Bay Point's looking to do some development of the land purchase and next phase that was put on hold. There is, for town meeting warrant articles, they are working on a recreational marijuana article three. Article 13 is non-conforming uses and structures for the ZBA. Article three, which is a section, is a drive-through restaurant, so looking at that, come up with an article. And also another one, which would be the Board of Health, Natural Resources, dog kennels and host stables. There was a company that wanted to build, it's almost like a five units, you know, duplexes, and there was an issue about the amount of land versus, you know, square footage, et cetera. It turns out, after all the discussion, it was discovered this morning that under, I think it's Chapter Eight, there's a little one sentence in there, if you have two or more, you know, dwellings, you know, and it basically says you need five acres. It was kind of hidden in there, and nobody found it. And they just found this morning this particular, which has 1.76 acres, this particular project, which we thought would qualify, doesn't because there's a little hidden goody in the zoning bylaws that we just found.
Okay.
So that's kind of, it's embarrassing, but it's also a shame because it was a nice project. So unfortunately, it's not gonna be able to happen. And that's all I have there. The other piece, while I was away, I got a call from John O'Rourke, which I think Derek hopefully got some information while I was gone. The aggregate energy program that was passed probably almost a year ago at a town meeting, finally got through the, you know, the process with the Department of Public Utilities and stuff. Why they were dragging their feet, I don't know, but it certainly took nine months to come up with this, and that should have been all approved by now, by the time I get back, I believe. I don't know if you've got notification or not. This is just so people understand, this is a program where there's a reduced guaranteed rate from this aggregate purchasing that we get involved with, and other towns have already done through SERPET, et cetera. I think 25 communities already. And what it does, it gives you a low rate than what's normally available, and you have the right to opt in or opt out, but everybody automatically has opted in, but like I say, you have the right to opt out. It's for any resident or any business, but not for municipality.
On the, the last email, same one that you received, which was that Secretary Beaton, he requested to have the aggregation plan approved, and the order issued by DPU approving the aggregation plan, but there's some revisions to the documents that need to be made.
So we're very close, because people have been asking for the last four months, "What should I do? Is it coming or not coming?" The answer is yes, it's coming. Sorry for the delay, but it's beyond our controls.
Okay, Selectman Whiteside?
Yes, I've told you and a couple of other people, tomorrow morning I will be handing in my resignation and retirement letter from the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen. I've spent more than 30 years on behalf of this town, and I do it at this time for personal reasons.
Well, it's not something any of us wanted to hear, but thank you very much for your hard work and your service to this board and to your community and to the town.
I'd just like to make one comment that, as we, sorry. I'm just quite sad.
Yep. No, it's, it's not a fun day. It wasn't a fun day when you told me this morning, but...
Move to adjourn.
Do we have any, do we have, does Rich have a bill? Do we want to pay him? No, we don't want to pay him? Okay.
Can't discuss it anyways. It's a second.
Well, we'll let Judy, we'll let Judy have it.
Move to approve Mr. Bowen's bill.
Yeah, I don't think we have it.
We don't have one.
I was being sarcastic.
Oh, we don't?
No.
Oh, again? Oh, his wife is gonna have his head.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn by Selectman Whiteside.
Second.
Second, second by Selectman Scaziotti. I'm gonna make this a roll call vote, in occasion. Selectman Tropiano?
Yes.
Selectman Scaziotti?
Yes.
Clerk Slavin? Titlebomb, yes. Whiteside?
Yes.
Okay. Good night, Wareham.